... stay our day prayer and for us our trespasses as we forgive those trespass against us and lead us not in temptation but deliver us from evil for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
Oh, thanks, Commissioner Widering. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on our agenda today is consider approval of our agenda. I'll move.
Second.
Vice Mayor Harret and second by Commissioner Stevens. We can vote. Wow. Can you feel a vote? I forgot my coffee dropped. Motion carries. Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda. Before we vote on this, I just want to make a comment. The chief pointed out to me, under item number B, authorized purchase of replacement, to purchase one, there was a name in there named Bob Hurley Dealership, and it is really Smiles Public Safety is the only change in that, is the name, which is just a name correction in item number B. So I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item E for discussion.
E? Okay, we will pull item E. Okay, so we'll vote on A, B, C, D, F.
I probably approve of the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harret, a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Okay. Well, why don't we just handle authorized item number E before we go to Commissioners' comments? And item number E is authorized payment to G and G Services for vegetative debris removal.
Okay, I don't have any problem with paying for the services that were provided. I'm just not real clear on how it came about that the company did $25,000 worth of work. Did the city know about it at the time, or was this after the fact when the city was billed that they found out that they owed this money? Or how did this come about?
Commissioner, this came about, we had done a partial order with G and G, and they, we were operating under the county's contract, the piggybacking off of the contract that the county has with G and G, and they were operating under the terms that they thought, that they used with the county, they thought the same applied with us, and so they were continuing to fulfill the responsibilities of the entire list that I gave them of locations. And so they had gone ahead and picked up the other debris before we had been able to catch up and notified that they had exceeded that initial order that we had given them.
Okay. So, so the list that they were given included all the locations, not just those if you wanted.
Not just those that were in the initial order, it was all, we surveyed the entire city, including the lake area, and gave them that list with the, with the initial order. And so they were operating on the premise that they wanted, that we wanted them to go ahead and pick up everything off of that list.
Okay.
Under the initial order, so.
That was the part that wasn't clear on that.
So that, we will, we will have the position in place now with our debris management plan where that won't happen again.
Okay.
So we'll be able to do that on a contractual basis with them.
You're gonna be able to get some of that reimbursed or any of it?
None of it's available. We, we thought at the time it might be, but unfortunately it was not declared a federal disaster area, so we're not, we're, this is unfortunately on the city for this one. Any other questions? There. Thank you, Commissioner Mayor.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on item number E, is to authorize payment to G and G Services for vegetative debris removal.
I make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner AG, a motion and a second.
Sure.
By Commissioner Stevens. Okay. Let's vote. Motion carries. Okay. Commissioners' comments. This time, the floor is open for comments from any of fellow Commissioners.
I see all these young people out here, and they had a big Sister Cities dinner trying to raise money to go to, to go to Japan, had every kind of food you could think of. I mean, about every country you can think of, and I made a pretty good dinner in it, but I needed some help. I did want to congratulate, congratulate the students and the sponsors on a, on a well-prepared and, and meal version of it.
Your opening statement about all these young people, are you saying we're a bunch of old codgers?
Yeah. I looked around, I looked around for a bunch of you old codgers, and I couldn't find any.
Well, sir, I was even wrong. Okay, other comments?
We had a good time picking up trash, starting at the, at the park over there. I think we doubled in attendance from last year, and we sure would like to have a whole lot more people, and maybe we can do it more often, and we picked up about four, four bags of trash in about an hour and a half, so. There is trash out there that we picked up.
There is. And if every, every one of our citizens would bend over and pick it up instead of stepping over it, it would be great, and throw it away, make our city a more beautiful place. Any other comments here? Hope for being any more comments, then I'll move to item number four, mayor's proclamation on a loyalty day. Mark? Okay, let's see, again, can use this gentleman.
Commander 17, James.
James, turn around right here, so we can get your picture. Come over here a little closer to.
Closer.
Yeah, a little closer to me, I don't bite, I promise. Whereas on May 1st, 1958, President Dwight D. Eisenhower declared loyalty day as a day of national observance and has been recognized annually since, and whereas American loyalty to American democracy and freedom is born of pride, appreciation, and understanding of our country, and we are loyal to America, our fellow citizens, and these ideals, and whereas this proclamation serves as an opportunity to recognize those who demonstrate their commitment to our country through service and sacrifice, and that serve as a model for all Americans, and whereas this proclamation recognizes the monumental achievements and invaluable contributions made by Americans that have led to America's founding principles, enduring guiding our nation toward progress and prosperity, and allowing the United States to be a leader among the nations of the world, and whereas this proclamation commends those honorable men and women who have demonstrated their loyalty to America by making remarkable sacrifices to preserve and protect these values, representing thousands of Oklahomans residing in every county who already have made the observance of loyalty day a success, and now therefore I West Maynard Mayor of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1st, 2014, as loyalty day. Would you like to say something? Huh? Come right up here to the microphone so they can hear you on TV.
Mayor, I'd like to invite you all to come out this Saturday. We are having the state celebration of loyalty day, which is going to be held at post 1317 here in Shawnee. The guest speaker will be Congressman James Langford, so he's the one that's going to be speaking. Appreciate y'all coming up.
Thank you again. Thank you for what you did. We encourage citizens to feel free to come forward, share things with us they think we might not know, or comment, or whatever. Not being any citizens coming forward, then I'll move to item number six, introduction of Shawnee 2014 Student Teacher Delegation for the Sister Cities Exchange Trip to Japan. Adults are Beth Polston, teacher at Grove School, Jessica Brown, teacher at Shawnee Middle School. Students are from Grove, Catherine Barrett and Carly Fisher, North Rock Keery, Jason Kennard, Shawnee Middle School, Bronwyn Cross, Joshua Floyd, Hadley Griffith, Abigail Morris, and Rose Templeton. Are you here? All of you, could you stand up, and we need to recognize. Okay, could you come up to the front? Why don't you all come up here to the front and let everybody on TV see your beautiful faces, young faces, as your vice mayor said.
I'll go down a little bit.
Now, I need you to turn around and let them all see. Look at this beautiful group. Look at this beautiful group.
I am Beth Polston. I am the music teacher and band director at Grove School, and I had the privilege of going to Japan last summer and had a wonderful, wonderful trip, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to go again this summer with this wonderful group of students behind me, and Ms. Jessica Brown as well. So thank you so much for your support and for giving all of us this opportunity to go this summer. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Hi, my name is Abigail Morris, and I go to Shawnee Middle School, and I just want to say thank you for this amazing opportunity of going to Japan.
Hi, I'm Rose Templeton, and I'm from Shawnee Middle School. Thanks for this awesome opportunity.
Hi, I'm Jackson Kennard, and I'm from North Rock Creek, and I also want to thank you for this wonderful opportunity to go to Japan this summer.
Hi, I'm Joshua Floyd, and I just want to thank all of y'all for giving us this opportunity.
Hi, I'm Carly Fisher, and I go to Grove School, and I just want to thank you, and I am so excited to be going on this trip.
Ally, stand up a little higher.
Hi, I'm Hadley Griffith, and I attend the Shawnee Middle School, and I'm very humbled to get selected to be a part of this, and I'm really thankful that you guys have helped get this moving along and all this kind of stuff for this opportunity for me and my friends.
I'm Kate Barrett, I go to Grove School, and I wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to go to Japan.
I'm Bronwyn Cross, and I go to Shawnee Middle School, and I would just love to thank you for this great opportunity for me to go to Japan.
I'm a little bit taller.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Brown, I teach English and Literature at Shawnee Middle School for sixth grade, and I just want to thank you in advance for giving us this experience that we'll be having with our students this summer in Japan. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
The nice thing about this whole trip is that you'll be living with students over there and with their parents and so forth. That's, I mean, it's different from any trip you'll ever have, and I know you'll enjoy it, it's just a great trip.
Thank you again. Item number seven, acknowledged sales tax report.
And for ones, I can report good news. April sales tax was collected was $1,421,000, which was actually up $184,000 from last year at the same time. March was down, and February was down, and some of it has to do, I personally think, is the government didn't process tax returns, and the April sales tax is really from February 15th to March 15th, and we receive it in April for the big box stores. So hopefully, well, hopefully it's a trend. $184,000 is quite a jump, and, you know, and, but compared to 2012 numbers, we were only at $4,000. So, you know, the economy is hopefully coming back, and it will be strong the next few months, so now that we're in budget time, we could use some good, strong months.
Good. Any questions on it? Anyone?
Do you think that maybe the state tax commission is getting a little delayed and sending it out, or they're getting delayed and sending it in from the stores?
No, it's all, it's all timing, you know, like when we receive it April 10th, it's, the big box stores are February to March. They get a little extra time, and then the smaller stores report at the end of the month, and they get those, but the big box stores in town have that two-week delay, so.
It's not always nice to have you come with a good report.
Mayor, you don't like it when I have to come say I'm more degenerate.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Item number eight is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick things tonight, a couple of events. John covered the Great American Trash Off. Also, I don't think we've mentioned to Commissioners that Youth Aviation Day was out at our airport on April 5th, and we had about 120 kids there to learn about aviation, so always interested in making sure that folks know what's going on at our airport.
Donuts were great.
Kind of an update on our PR firm. We've had one op-ed, we're working on a video, they did some photos and all in town last week. We've had three mandatory employee meetings where we talked about sales tax, and we're working on obtaining a URL so that we can put our videos and things like that on it and measure how many hits we have on our site based on the advertising that we're doing. So just a quick little update on that. Probably the biggest thing that we're talking about these days is budget. We had actually planned to have a draft budget out to Commissioners of the General Fund about a week ago. Probably a week and a half ago or so, we got information in from our insurance consultant that we could have as much as a 31% increase in our medical insurance costs through Blue Cross Blue Shield. Immediately, Cindy and I sat down and talked about it, and made the decision that most likely what we'd end up doing proposing to the city Commissioners is sharing in that cost with the employees. Essentially, the way things are structured now, the city's contribution is, is a flat amount, it's a set amount, and the increase or the decrease has been typically a part of the employees. We haven't seen much of a decrease in the years and just a few small increases, but a 31% increase would end up causing our employees to see 100% increase in their premiums. So with some of our staff, that's going to be something difficult for them to, to have to endure. So we've dropped back a little bit, and we'll be presenting a budget that has some additional contribution to the employee healthcare contribution. However, we're still working on trying to figure out how we can trim some of that cost first, so bear with us, we're working on it, and we'll get with you guys just as soon as we possibly can. In SMA, we are budgeting flat. We've had some, some additional customers in this budget year that we don't, such as the city of Tecumseh that went away. We never budgeted for that revenue to begin with, so we're not budgeting for it now, but it's been about flat this year, it's been about what we anticipated the revenue would be. So, and then coming up, I'll talk a little bit about the SMA master plan, but we've, we're starting to implement some of those in this budget year for some of the capital requests. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, Mayor and myself, and the CDB staff, and the chairman of, well, the vice chair and the immediate past chair of the Chamber Board have met, and we're formulating the board. We're supposed to meet here again because what happened basically was, is each of us took some of the people that were on the list, and we went out and contacted them to see if they'd been interested in serving or not. Couple of those came back as no, so we're still looking for a couple others, and we'll meet again to determine who will be the initial board at the 506, 501(c)(6) start of it, and then we'll, we'll meet again and report back again to Commissioners at some point shortly. But our goal is to have everything done by July 1st. I mentioned the SMA master plan. I know Commissioners are anxious to get that. Basically, the holdup has been us. We got a draft, we have drafts in from Smith, Roberts, Baldishweiler, and we're evaluating those and working with our staff to make sure that they're, they fit our, our needs. In May, we'll be bringing that to the city commission so that you guys can see what some of the final results are.
That will include a new drought management plan, right?
No, we discussed that.
Okay.
Now, we, we need to talk about the drought management plan in terms of, in terms of whether it still fits anymore, because we've found some things with, with our drought, drought management plan that probably have changed, but that wasn't part of the scope of work as part of that. So we do need to address that, Commissioner, but we have, that's not a part of the scope of work.
The one we're talking about is the one that had all the measure, ability to measure the flows and the water lines and all, all of those things.
Finally, this is just a quick update. Grove School approached us about a month ago with some traffic issues that they have out there. I witnessed those myself. The city engineer and myself have sat down with the superintendent of schools and the president of the school board, and we're going to propose some really inexpensive, quick things that we can do to help manage the traffic around there a little bit, but there'll probably be a capital request in this year's budget to deal with a drop lane there on the south side of the school that will help traffic flow, and you'll be seeing some more of that.
I did see a, along with that, a police car setting out there, and just the visibility of that police car, I noticed people were really slowing up, and I thought that wasn't anybody in the police, but it looked like they'd put it out there, which is great, and it really, and I even asked somebody that comes in front of me that was going to the same place, they said, "Is that a police car there?" So I'm sure y'all are doing a good job on that.
I asked the chief to kind of, kind of monitor that situation, and no citations have been written out there. Everybody seems to behave most of the time, but there are those few folks that are impatient and try to go around, you know, turning vehicles and all, so we're going to try and alleviate that situation.
Good job.
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any.
Then our finalizing the city manager's report. Item number nine is consider bids for Woodland Park Pool Improvement. Let's ask for a staff report this time.
Mayor and Commissioners, two weeks ago, we opened the pool bids. We had four bidders. We took the lowest bid, the engineer for the, for the swimming pool and me, and requested some items from that lowest bidder to, to further investigate them and the company that they have built the pool. We've been in contact with them a couple of times, we haven't received any information. I'd really like to give it a couple more weeks for us to, to try to get some information from them, but if not, we're probably going to have to make a decision to, to move on to probably the next bidder. But I know that we're all anxious to get this started, but I don't feel that I could award anything without really going over it and making sure that, that what, what these companies build and, and who they are is, is really what, what we need in here, so.
Has the company returned your call, or are they just not?
That we have talked to them, they've returned an email and calls, but we've talked to, to the main contractor, and the contractor, the subcontractor that he has building the pool is currently building a pool with him and has built one before, and, and from what I understand, this is the third, this would be the third pool that they, they built for them.
Yeah.
And they, we, we requested to get some information on that pool company and haven't received it yet, so.
Did everything work out with the health department out of Oakville City?
That was another question I've asked, and we have not heard back from the health department on the second set of submittals, and I haven't heard back from the engineer today. I did email him this morning with a couple of questions, and he was supposed to reach out and talk to both the, the pool contractor and the health department today, but I haven't heard back from him.
The, the, the second lowest was still in budget?
Barely.
Just barely, it'll be a tight one, yeah.
My suggestion is to, excuse me, Commissioner, my suggestion is to send them a letter telling they got so long, it can fly, or otherwise they're going to go to the second bidder and sit and react to it a month or so waiting on them.
Yeah, we, we have 45 days in there that, that, for the bids to, to current, so time, time is going to tick out here pretty soon, so.
We're going to sacrifice quality.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe we need to take any action on that matter, need a motion or anything to delay it.
Maybe we defer.
Okay. A motion and a second then, okay?
To the, to the next meeting?
To defer it to the next meeting, yes.
To the next meeting?
Commissioner Smith. But it's not ready yet.
Okay, now you can vote.
Now, she just tried to get her notes ready before she gave us the opportunity to vote. Motion carries, okay?
Mr. Mayor, no business, no new business tonight.
Okay. Item number 11 is administrative reports, including but not limited to Director of Operations James Bryce at Boy Scout Park Splash Pad.
As y'all are aware, we, we did turn in a grant for, to build a splash pad over in Boy Scout Park with the hopes to, to have that up and running this year, to, to at least give the kids some other kind of water feature this year. We did meet the deadline on, on submitting that, that grant. Just a little bit of background on this, though, last year's submittals were kind of held up because of the government shutdown, and they did not get their funding till November this last year. What they are telling me is they were hoping that they will be able to award these grants June or July of this year, but they have, they have yet to get their funding, so until they get their funding, they are, they don't know who they're going to be able to award the bids to, so, but hopefully they get those in, and we can get started on this, and hopefully have something open this year.
But, but it would be June or July before?
June or July, yes.
With a little luck, next year, we'd have a new splash pad at Boy Scout and a new pool.
Is that, is that dependent on any city funding, or is that all grant money?
We, we do have a match in this.
But we're, we're thinking, Commissioner, that that smoke grant that we all voted for, the anti-smoking, or whoever voted.
Yeah, we didn't all vote for that.
The one that passed, okay? Okay, the one that passed, that, that should be pretty quick coming up.
We, we've got some things to, to bring in front of y'all, and the, the timeframe doesn't ever close this year for submitting that grant, so as soon as we get some things together, we'll be bringing that in front of y'all.
We need to push for that to get that done. I think, remember when they said that to us, one was likely, one was signs on the
storefront signs.
Storefront signs businesses so that they, for security reasons, they couldn't put, cover the entire windows for signs, so, whatever that was, so we go from there, okay? All right, thank you. Okay, item number 12 is consider an executive session for discussion of matters relating to sales tax enforcement. The city attorney recommends an executive session. I'll entertain a motion at this time for that. Motion. Commissioner Harret, a second. By Commissioner Smith. Okay, I will recess the city.
Wait, hold on.
Oh, oh, Keith, sorry, I thought it was. Motion carries. Okay, I will recess the city commission meeting to convene the Shawnee Airport Authority. Being, I'll call it to order, and we do have a forum here, so I'll consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Stevens?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Item number two is new business.
Mr. Mayor, no new business or administrative.
Mr. Mayor, no new business or administrative reports tonight.
And I will adjourn the SMA, and I'll call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. And I'll chair to entertain a motion to consider approval of the consent agenda. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winteringer. Nope, we're fine. You're doing great. You're doing great. Motion carries. Any new business?
Mr. Mayor, no new business or administrative report.
Okay, item number four is consider an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding encroachment into the city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by 250OS. Chair will entertain a motion in that matter. Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Harriet. Who made the second, Olivia?
Steve.
Commissioner Smith, great, okay. We'll vote on that matter. Motion carries. So at this time, we will then move into executive sessions. In your office. Going to reconvene. No, it's mine, I guess. Reconvene the city commission. And item number 13 was consider matters discussed in the executive session regarding matters relating to
Well, I'm sorry. Did you reconvene in SMA or city? You need to reconvene in SMA.
Oh, okay, I'll reconvene the SMA. Okay, and then I go to 13, huh?
In SMA, you go to five. And then you adjourn and go to CC and go to 13.
You go to five?
In SMA.
I got it right. I don't even remember what it said. Lost it. Somebody read it for me, what number five is in the SMA. I've lost it.
Consider the matters discussed in executive session.
Okay, consider matters discussed. Is that regarding matters relating to?
Encroachment.
The encroachment into the city's utility service.
City's utility service area by other entities as authorized by 250. Okay. No action was taken? I don't think we need a motion on that matter, don't we?
More for one, see if there is one.
Anybody want to make a motion on that? Okay, no motion. We'll move on then to
Get adjourned?
Adjourn that one, and then we will now move to the item number 13, which was consider matters discussed in executive session regarding matters relating to sales tax enforcement. As the city attorney recommended, an executive session. Chair will entertain a motion, but there was no action taken. Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, if not, I will adjourn the city commission. And by the way, that lady right there, who has been so wonderful to work with, this is her last meeting. Jessica, she's going to Henrietta. Her husband has a big job over there, and she's going to go to work at a bank, right? Hi, Lindsey. She's the best reporter. Yes, sir.